All right, I will call this meeting to order. Um, uh, Michael, Eric Clark, can we have a little call please?
Angie, Paul, Cindy, Byting, Mary Beth, James, Barbara, Matt.
I approve a closing, please, and we go to the legislative agenda.
Let's leave it.
It is to the flag of the United States of America. A considerate power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, sorry.
Okay, you wrote any questions? Seen any Mike?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Don't believe we have any public input?
Hmm.
Will I move on to our minutes from last meeting on November 8th of a motion to approve the minutes?
So, sorry.
Any questions or changes on those? Not seen any Mike?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Updates on the middle school, high school remodel and elementary school? I understand we have on Zoom tonight.
Yep, so Chris Garrity, I believe, is on Zoom. Chris, if you just kind of want to talk us through.
Get there.
All right. Go ahead.
Who could it be you guys again?
Good job.
I'm doing well. So hopefully I get my own mic, does a great job, so I've got some big shoes to fill. Uh, on the high school and middle school renovations, um, we are closing out everything right now. I know we met with, uh, Bill Sullivan, uh, late, I think it was last week. Uh, getting ready to turn over all the documents over to him, operations manuals, really how you run your building. Um, so all that's being turned over to him, uh, next week. So everything's kind of wrapping up with the high school, middle school. Uh, HVAC systems, control systems, some of the detailed programming of the HVAC system, we're working through that. Uh, just making sure everything, all the buildings and all that are working and everything's working properly. So, uh, we're still involved with that. I think everything seems to be working okay, but there's every once in a while some stuff that comes up. But we make sure that we're still here, uh, cleaning up for you guys. Uh, on the elementary school, things are going well. Uh, the gym, concrete panels have all been poured, so those are what that picture you see there with the tarps over that. Uh, so that's all poured, they're curing right now, and they're getting ready to be raised, uh, next week. So once it comes back to Thanksgiving, uh, those will start coming up as well. I'm just doing a good job, and he's working with some of the metal groups in that construction class. And, uh, they're going to do a little bit of a presentation and walk through, uh, the afternoon on Monday as well. Uh, big, big news, uh, the big change you're going to see here very shortly is steel coming in. So starting next week, we'll start getting steel arrivals. Um, steel should be getting, starting in December, then getting installed through March. Um, the big thing that you're going to see, uh, is on the, uh, 10th of December, we've got our gym steel choice. Those are 98 feet long, those are the biggest field we have on the project. Um, obviously, this is the biggest space. Uh, we're working with the school, uh, making sure that, I know Mike's doing a good job, um, making sure that those get delivered. Um, it is off time, so I think we're scheduled for 9:30 in the morning. Um, and he's worked with the truck drivers and everything else to make sure that they get out to the site safely. Uh, but you will see those, the steel coming through town, uh, on the 10th. So, things are moving along. Um, he's going to start steel coming up, or steel starting on December 2nd. So, uh, you'll see some drastic changes here in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, just looking around right now at, uh, board members, are there any questions, uh, for Chris regarding the project updates?
I don't have a project update question, but I did notice their sign is down. Is that there, one of their entrances to the end of the project? On their fence.
I'm sorry, can I get it again?
The, one of your signs is off the fence, it's just down? Not, not a big deal. I just thought, hey, let you know.
Might have blown away, it's been rather windy lately.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was actually thinking.
I, I will just let it go right now, and then I'll look at next thing.
Yeah, it's half, it's half attached, I just don't want it to fall off, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Mike would have gone.
All right, and I'll.
No, he wouldn't.
Right now, it's been a few days.
It's pretty windy. Awesome, so I think we're good, thank you.
Thanks, Chris, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, good evening, guys.
Thank you.
So, on a side note, they did call me about these big sunlight loads are coming in with the steel, because they can't make any term into the school. So they are going to have to go across the median out there.
Oh.
And so they're, they're going to try, they're hoping that they can remove the road signs temporarily, so they can cross them and go back out there. They're going to remove them.
Wow.
It's a, it's going to be a big, a big load when it comes in.
At least they're, but they're thinking ahead, which is awesome, so that they don't like run into that trouble. That's big, that's really long, for these steel, exciting.
Yeah, so just real quick, while we're on this topic, um, I've talked a little bit about the movable furniture, uh, for the elementary schools. So I just shared some basic information with everyone. I mean, we ended up with nine proposals, which was good, it generated competition, uh, which is what you look for in RFPs. Uh, we narrowed that down, uh, from nine to four. And then, uh, I believe it was already like three weeks ago, um.
Yeah.
Yes. Three weeks ago, uh, we brought in those four groups, uh, over two different days. We had two one day and two another day. And had them come in and just speak to kind of what they would bring to this project. And then what they had rendering, they had information, they had breakdowns of budgets by classroom. Um, and I would say, one of my takeaways from this process is, when you feel like you're communicating clearly, you can never communicate too clearly, because what appeared to be very clear directions, even to people like us who are not into furniture business, got interpreted in a variety of ways, um, which I will say for the groups that ultimately ended up in our, our final consideration, for the groups that paid attention to detail and responded accurately to our request for proposal, because they did what we asked them to do, whereas others, I don't know where the disconnect was, and they came to a presentation, and were missing many facets of what was asked for.
Of course.
In a presentation. Um, but, bottom line, uh, we verbally agreed at this point to work with them in Business Interiors. It's a Wisconsin company, they have an office in Madison. Most of the furniture is being sourced from Han, which is a company out of Iowa, so close as well. And they had stakeholder meetings last week, uh, with grade level teams at the elementary school, and then some department teams as well at the elementary school. Scott and I, I think, have been with them two or three times already in the first week since we made this verbal agreement. Um, they will be back next Friday, um, to kind of go through everything, and then back again the next Monday, um, to have what's called a finish meeting. That finish meeting is going to be with PSI as well, so we can make sure that we're making finishes between what the classrooms are going to look like and what the furniture is going to look like in terms of color schemes. And then the other piece that's related to that is, is we've gotten deeper into these conversations. It also generates, um, other questions and things we need to clarify soon in terms of things like technology, because the wiring and the reports go in classrooms, where plugins go for smart boards and for teacher computers and for everything else. We start to realize there's a ton of decisions and things that need to be carefully planned, so we don't end up in these rooms on the outside.
I never have an outlet.
Oh, gosh, well, that's kind of a question. So there's at least nine in every room in case someone asks you. We do have an element problem at the existing schools, not surprising because they're old, uh, but in the new rooms, it's minimum of nine, because that question has come. So, so I guess I just wanted to throw all there, that there's, there's a lot of these things that are kind of happening right now that, one domino touches the next domino, and we are trying to be very thoughtful in our decisions, so we minimize surprising moments come in August. But this is definitely just furniture things, unearthed a lot of different things that come up, we're going to go, yeah. We better make sure that's going to be done right. So PSI has been good to work with them, they're going to be a part of those meetings, like I said. We're going to be the PC to go through what they call low voltage, which is all the wiring and electrical stuff and, um, yeah, things for computers and smart boards and teacher desks. Did they have any concerns about, uh, time frame delivery with supply chain issues or anything like that? So that was one of our, like, must do's in the RFP, is that they basically needed to guarantee that as these rooms started being finished as early as July, that they could get things here, that they could have them sourced and have it installed and ready. And this particular group did not have concerns, uh, but it is basically contingent on us having a proposal through by the board at the next meeting in December. Because then the other piece that's crucial to that is prices increase on January 1st. So we want to lock in prices plus get the purchase orders submitted in December, so then they can start ordering these things and, yes, and we don't have to worry much about supply chain issues. There were a few groups admittedly in their RFP who were honest and said, we're not sure we can do this. But the group, I believe, did not have any concerns on that. They, their word is they'll, they'll meet those deadlines. Sorry, I just wanted to put that out there, so people are aware of all those other pieces that are going on. So you'll see at the next board meeting in December, you will see, uh, probably phrase it as a not to exceed, like we have larger purchases in the past, uh, in Business Interiors, removable furniture. So, hope for that in December. Any questions on any of those items? Next Monday, yeah, it's going to get real, real quick, so the tilt-up panels are going up next week, starting Monday. So, I think we haven't walked out there at all recently, since they've been poured. I mean, yeah, you can actually see where the doorways are, you can see where the windows are, where the electrical panels are, because they had to be locked down in the concrete pores. So you're, you can kind of envision what it's going to look like unless they can tilt it up. Like, oh, that's a door. So, it'll be fun to see in 10 days. It's a lot different.
And I heard that, um, the construction class is going to go out and watch.
Yep. Yeah, I think Chris just confirmed in a talk I've heard for at least that they're going to do that on Monday next week, so.
That's a great opportunity to really fix this. Real life.
I don't think I would have known what tilt-up panels were when I was 17.
Ah, no, I didn't in that life either, so, you know.
So that'll be good for them.
Very cool.
All right.
Cool. So then we can, um, move on to our district business of our school operations updates.
Yep, just going to hop up here. Brad, go ahead. Jump right to the next one. Um, just do it aside, I create this, not a big deal, but, um, it's really, and Katie will get into this because she's got a lady, but, I guess unfortunately, county and in the state, case counts have increased in the last couple of weeks. We had a pretty good run of either state or D.C. in the last couple of weeks, they have gone back up again. But as I said, Katie will get that more detail of that, so. Katie? The affirmation.
Speaking of, um, so data, Wisconsin, we have seen an increase in cases. Um, I think it's interesting because our highest point a year ago is, is like a year ago, pretty much exactly from where we're at right now. So that was our highest point ever in the pandemic. We are up to, I think technically, the second highest point ever. I mean, we're pretty close to up there again. Um, so I know it doesn't look the same, but, uh, we're seeing a pretty big increase right now. Um, and it's still been increasing, we haven't seen it stabilize, we haven't seen it increase. So, uh, Wisconsin's averaging almost 3,000 cases a day right now, um, with a percent positive that's over 11%. Uh, we don't see that below five. So really, Wisconsin could probably be doing more testing, but we're probably not seeing all cases represented in that 14 day average. Dane County, uh, Dane County is, uh, still increasing, we're lower than where we were a year ago, so that's good. Uh, but we're still seeking an increase here in Dane County to, um, 148 cases a day, pretty much percent below 5% with that percent positive. Uh, the thing I think, I don't know, the point I saw today, which was interesting to me, if you look at our lowest points in Wisconsin in June, I mean, a lot of people started doing more this June, we all felt a little bit more comfortable. Uh, I made plans to go to the PEPH game this last weekend, but that didn't happen. Um, so, uh, I think it's really interesting that there's 111 cases a day in Wisconsin, and we're seeing more than that every day in Dane County alone right now. So that just stood out to me today when I was looking at the data. There you go, that's one. Uh, so like I said, the cases in Wisconsin are increasing right now. Uh, Wisconsin is number six in the West currently. Uh, last time I showed you guys this graphic of Wisconsin and the different counties, I think there's five red counties. I'm not surprised that a lot of them that are red right now are worrying Minnesota, because Minnesota's been number one and two recently. So, uh, they've been number one mostly, they just dropped to number two. So my family lives in Minnesota, so I worry about what they're doing too. Uh, but Dane County went from high to very high, and, uh, I think Dane County is still one of the lower ones technically, but, uh, we are still seeing very high case rates in Dane County. I added this one over on the right because, uh, I, I watched a webinar last week from the state, and I thought this one was really interesting to me. So I think I do it, but it was really interesting, it's the graphic, sorry, it's really small. Oh, I should have made it bigger. But it's the peak of cases by, uh, age group, and right now, well, you can see our criteria is probably like peak last November. Our blue line there, which is the under 18, what is the lowest? Other age groups were the highest. Right now, remember me, the under 18 age group is the highest case rate in all of Wisconsin. Uh, so we are seeing the most cases in kids right now. Uh, and for, I think this is my third board meeting, and grown, eight to 11 year olds continue to have the highest case rate in Dane County. Uh, so we are seeing a lot of cases in kids right now. Numbers, when you look at the CDC's seven day total cases for 100,000, Wisconsin's at, uh, 377. Um, I don't know if we've seen it that high since they started reporting it this way, uh, in Wisconsin. Dane County, we're up to 204. Uh, Wisconsin's at, right now, we're at 175. Uh, that actually went down to just under 100. When did I tell you that? That was like a week ago?
A month ago, yeah.
Um, and that was already back up to almost 100. Uh, so, and I think that one will go up higher just from what I'm hearing in the community, so, uh, from parents and students. So, uh, I can see that one going up a little bit more, but we'll see. Um, so what that means for the seven day average cases for 100,000, Wisconsin's seeing about 53.9 for 100,000. Uh, Dane County's 20.6, 28.6, sorry, and Wisconsin's right now is 23.9. Uh, so vaccinations, um, Wisconsin, we did see like well over 100,000 more that started the series, and, and that's probably in response to kids all started, the 5 through 11 all started getting their vaccines. Um, we're at 58.7% of the population has at least one dose. They aren't doing it of the eligible population as much anymore, because there's such a small number now of those that are not eligible. So, um, I'm not going to report that portion of it unless somebody really wants to know, then I can try to find it for you. Well, um, so instead I added the percentage of the population that has completed the series, so Wisconsin's 55.8. Uh, Dane County, we saw a pretty good increase as well. Uh, I don't remember the exact number, no, I'm sorry. Uh, but 75.4% of the population has at least one dose, and, uh, 71.9% has completed it. Uh, and then I separated ours out into the middle school, high school, and the elementary. I added the elementary together. Uh, we've had 63.3% in the middle school, high school that had at least one dose. 56.3% of them have actually completed the series. Uh, some of those are new, some of them aren't, so, uh, some people just added up the second dose. Uh, the elementary, so far, we've had 69 students start the series, which are only being out for less than two weeks, I thought that was pretty good. Uh, we do have vaccine clinics set up for tomorrow. Uh, we had 139 in, people who are individuals say they were interested, about 75 of those from 5 to 11 age group. As of yesterday, the company that did the registration and stuff, they said we had 88 registered. I don't know what age they are, because we're also allowing people to get boosters and everything as well. Because, uh, getting anybody vaccinated in the community helps benefit the students, so. If it was going to be easy for people, we thought we'd have booster for them too. So, we have 88 as of yesterday, I don't know where we're at today, um, they didn't pay back to me, so. Uh, that 69 goes, 20.8% of our elementary students have started the vaccine series, but, uh, tomorrow we might get more, so. So the community in general, we're at 67.6%, with 65.6% of them, uh, completing the series. Um, just looking at where we've been at for data here in the district, um, we've been having pretty much three cases every week. Uh, that's kind of surprising to me that they keep that. Um, but, uh, we've had some new quarantines, uh, a lot of them are from outside exposures, not in school exposures, although we have had a few in school exposures. Uh, decent amount of kids that have been out on quarantine are positive, um, and we've had a lot of kids out with symptoms lately. Luckily, a majority of them are testing at the vet. Um, and this last week, we did 23 tests at school, and we've done 268 tests so far in about two months, because it's been about two months that we've been testing for vaccines. Yeah. It's been keeping us busy. So.
Yep, so just, obviously, Katie just talked about the testing and the procedures, this is not the new way to kind of really in front of people's face. Quarantine information remains consistent, uh, what we have in the past. Moving into this area though, um, just, you know, really thinking back to the fact that we've, we've utilized and we've shared this information, this framework, for a year now, and I think the fact that we've been able to remain consistent with, kind of, the framework, and then obviously the decision-making is situational then based on what we're seeing at that present time or in the last couple of weeks or month, or whatever the case may be. But in terms of the framework, so I'll be the first to admit that, uh, even for me, uh, who's someone that has to follow this relatively closely, Public Health Madison Dane County has, has probably created a little confusion, um, because the recommendation has not changed. The recommendation is, is that we mask in schools. Uh, what has changed is the fact that, uh, when they released the last masking order, they basically said that for whatever reason, uh, they weren't going to re-up the masking order in Dane County. So, like I said, I'll be the first to admit that is a little confusing. I shared that feedback, uh, the public health reference sits in our superintendent meetings, um, to let him know that for those of us that are working through this situation, kind of, on the ground floor in the important places like school districts, it does create some confusion for our families and our communities when the recommendation is the same, that it appears like as of the 27th, uh, their order will be going away, despite the fact that, as Katie shared earlier, case counts in Dane County are now higher than they were when the order came into place in August. So, I guess I just point that out because the, the oddity of that situation is not lost. Um, second piece, local census tract data, went through it before and looked at where we're at based on the CDC levels. Albeit, uh, for this last, uh, data point, we were, were lower than the county, and we're lower, uh, than the state, but we're still in that high level, uh, as defined by the CDC. And then the last piece is our lived experience and our instructional model. And I alluded to this a little bit in the message that I had sent to the board the other day. Operationally, the best way I can describe it is we're, we're tight. We're, we're, we're remaining open in classrooms and grade levels in schools, uh, but having staff members give up prep time to cover for other teachers, our principals subbing for teachers, uh, often. Um, in some cases, when we just don't have subs, then unfortunately, classes being moved to the library, because then we have someone there that can be supervised, some sort of structured activity in the library. And I guess the best way that I could describe that is, we, we haven't got to that tipping point yet, but that's one of those where you can't like put a magic number to it, but you can just, you just know when this isn't sustainable anymore, and you need to pause, because we just don't have enough people in the building to help those function or maintain functions or good in-person learning environment. So, our lived experience is telling us that we have been quite successful for, I know we're now, well, 12 weeks into this, uh, school year, uh, but, but it's not as though we have a lot of room for error right now, we're, we're tight. And if we tip any further, it's going to be hard to maintain that. So, I think using these items has, has served us well, uh, and that coupled with our guiding principle, trying to keep as many kids in person as safely as possible, uh, really just helps inform any recommendations or ideas that we would share with you, uh, as a school board. Go ahead, Doug. So all of that being said, uh, knowing kind of where things are at right now in the community, and where our operations are at, trying to find a way to do this, um, in a thoughtful way. Um, and obviously, if we've learned anything in the last 18 to 20 months, um, things that once upon a time we, we thought were good, we, we, we learned and we realized that it's, it's not always the greatest, but we make the best decisions with the information that we have in front of us at the time. So based on where, where we're at operationally, where our case counts are at, uh, and then really trying to focus on, on our school district and on the health of our community, uh, which obviously spills over into the health of our student body and our staff. It's, it's looking at utilizing the CDC thresholds with the Wisconsin High School District Census Trac. And then to set our procedure of whether or not masking, uh, is going to be optional, recommended, or required. And this is obviously in lieu of, if Public Health Madison Dane County does what they hinted that they were going to do, and they do not extend the order after November 27th, uh, at that point, we need to have some sort of guidance and decision-making framework in place for us as a school district. So what, what I'm recommending is, is that we tie it, uh, to the Wisconsin High School District data, uh, because one thing we've seen repeatedly is, is the levels of transmission and the frequency of cases in, in the community, uh, that, that's really represented in what's coming through the door and the, the cases that our kids have and our staff have. So, that would be the, I think the big picture recommendation is to tie that, um, masking procedure to those CDC thresholds, low, moderate, to that substantial, or high. And then if you want to go to the, to the next slide. So, once again, you learn things as you go through the process of trying to be as clear as possible, in a situation where you're, you're dealing with something that you've never dealt with before, um, here's the attempt to be as clear as possible. Um, so looking at those community transmission levels, uh, the notice of, the notion of benchmarking is, is looking at those numbers each Thursday. Katie, myself, Matt, probably speaking of all those numbers and talking about that, and then putting out some sort of basic, you know, standard communication to both our families and our staff on Friday, to make it as clear as it possibly can be, in terms of here's where we're at in the Wisconsin High School District Census Trac. And then I think the key piece, and we talked about this before, is we are susceptible to some volatility in data, uh, just given the fact that our sample size is relatively small. So, depending how you perceive this, uh, that volatility could lead to good or bad decisions being made rapidly one way or the other, who simply went with one. So the notion that we would want to see this shift, um, for at least two weeks, helps us avoid some of that volatility in the data and the sample size. But then we can share that update on PGI. And then the part that I wanted to point out, once again, that we've thought about this and talked about this, it's basically thought of as like a rolling two weeks. So it's, it's now that we say, well, two weeks is December 3rd, then it has to be, you know, a two-week section, a two-week set. No, it's a rolling two weeks in my mind. I mean, it's not as though we like stick a state in there, and then start to count over and go the next two weeks. It just continues to roll. So in that rolling two weeks, if we have a shift in our, in our case counts as defined by the CDC, then let's say if we went down to moderate, well, then if that followed up the next week, well, then we would have our rolling two weeks of, we now moved down to moderate. And in that Friday message after the second week, we would communicate, uh, a virtual being in the moderate range for two weeks in our procedure. This is what we are shifting to, uh, for the following. And then basically, it would be for at least the following two weeks, because we wouldn't be able to undergo another shift until we saw that change for two of the. be able to undergo another shift until we saw that change for two weeks. So in terms of the data, once again, just trying to be as clear as possible and answer questions before they come if possible. The notion of sending out that first update on December 3rd, obviously, we're here tonight on November 22nd. Sending one out this Friday probably would not be real useful given the holiday. So this would be the next Friday after we come back from school. And then basically, future updates coming out every Friday. If you look closely at those dates, I did not include on New Year's Eve for the same reason. Don't plan to benchmark data during our holiday parade, to be honest. That won't be real good data either. So really, that would be, is the plan, is to send this out on December 3rd and say, here's where we're at. Look for another message on Friday to tend to this information.
Yeah, so with respect to our, because our community size isn't going to be that 100,000. What, how many does it take to make that shift, I guess? Or how many does it affect? I mean, if we have one case, does that mean it's actually 10 cases when it comes to that 100,000 mark? You know what I mean? I don't know how many that, what that threshold really is.
A week ago, when we dropped just below the hundred mark, we got up to 95, six cases total of seven days.
So we need to be in our community less than six? That's what I'm curious, how many cases it takes to make it below that mark or above that mark? So it's about six is the?
About six in a week would get you below the 100.
Okay. I was just curious how many, because I don't know what our population is and...
Population is usually 6,293.
Okay.
To be specific. Just so you know.
It doesn't take a lot of cases?
I don't have it all right in front of me right here.
No, it doesn't. You're right. You know, and that's the other thing, like I said, that's I think why the two-week thing is special. And then the other piece is, I guess, once again, we're thinking of people's frame of references here. It wasn't that long ago, relatively speaking, that the levels even in our community were below that. In July, we were there. June, we were there. Now, it feels like forever ago, but it wasn't that long ago all that is considered. So the hope certainly is that as vaccination rates go up and perhaps just the overall health goes up, then we get back to that level and for better or for worse, our numbers could, could go there depending on where it's at.
How do you, how do you account for like minor fluctuations or let's say like half the week drops us below, you know, high transmission, the rest of it's high? I mean, what if it's a constant?
That's why we...
Very kind of like averaging for the week?
That's why I said we're going to benchmark it on Thursday. Because I mean, there's got to be a day when we, when we look at the data, I mean, yeah, that is where we're putting the stake in the ground. Is that okay?
So like whatever Thursday shows?
Katie, you want to explain kind of how you've gone through with your data previously and like what that's looked like if you put together the numbers?
When I put it together for the board meetings, I'd look at what it is that they, or that they report, because sometimes what comes out that day is what they report. But I mean, we could definitely do an average of the week, so.
That would be better, I think, because otherwise you're looking at one bad day or a bad day.
I'm not wishing one or the other, I'm just asking how to interpret or how we tell people that's interpreted.
I think the average is probably the best.
Yeah, because otherwise, I mean, you could have, one family could take it above your, or drop it, you know, I mean, it could, in one day, you could take, if they, all of a sudden, you have one family that's got five kids in it or five people, and they all test positive one day, that's one day that jumps you above the case.
But also conceptually, if it's the beginning of the week, that's low, and then it's towards the end, that's higher, well then is it assuming that?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's why they, we should kind of take an average for the week or...
So, sorry. And then well, these, the numbers when they come out, they're based off of a seven-day case total. They're not what happened on Thursday. So they're already based on a seven-day case total. So you're looking at what happened over the week already.
So it's already averaging now?
It is kind of already averaged in a way.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, not one, typically to jump you.
Yeah, no, so even when I report, isn't like the cases from just today, it is the seven-day total. Cases per 100,000.
That makes sense.
Katie or Jordan, I don't, have either of you heard or anyone heard of why there was such a drop in our cases last week? Is any speculation, just no...
We've had a lot of fluctuations, so I mean, it's just kind of what happens. I mean, the hope is they're going to go down.
Yeah, so that was last week, right? Yeah.
Because I can tell you it's between sports. Because if there was one fall sports ended in...
Well, that's last week probably.
So people were probably not traveling as much.
Yeah.
Good question, so, sure, go ahead, Doug. So I mean, once again, without the PHMDC order, if we are instituting something indoors from masking, I think the notion of trying to keep this as consistent as possible with a few minor exceptions would benefit all of us because if we lacked one thing over the last year and a half, it's been clarity in many things. So try to be as consistent and clear as possible. Just the notion that in our facilities, when we're indoors, if this is what we're doing during the school day, for the most part, this is what we are going to do when it's not the school day. I know there are some that have said like from 7:30 to 3:30, this is their policy, and from 3:30 on, they have a different policy. Admittedly, I struggle with that a little bit because I just, I understand their intent, but the notion to me that it just magically disappears after 3:30, we don't have anything to worry about after school, and we're talking about the same kids, the same families. And our fundamental goal is to support in-person learning. From 7:30 to 3:30, I don't want to roll the dice and jeopardize what we're trying to hold on to during the school day by somehow thinking and thinking that magically it'll get better after school would be different. So as I said, trying to be as consistent as possible. If there's an indoor masking policy, then the policy would largely reflect where we're at and where we've been at for some time. That would be want to move to the next one. I did mention though, an exception. So the one exception that we are proposing at this point is if we're in a district initiated indoor masking requirement, if public health does not re-up, then we would look at an exception. And that exception would be, and obviously, wording is everything in this situation, so I want to be clear, actively competing. So yes, playing the game, out on the floor, playing the game. And for fine arts, performing or doing those things, not, not I'm sitting waiting to perform or I'm on the bench not playing. It would be an actively participating and playing.
So when they play like basketball, they come out, they gotta, as soon as they sit on the bench, they gotta put one on?
That would be, yes.
That just makes no sense to me at all because when you're playing, you're right up next to the kid, and then you go sit down on the bench, you gotta put one on. It just, to me, that is for no reason because they just got done being this close to each other, now you're going to sit them apart, and now we gotta put them on. It just, to me, that makes no sense.
Well, what I've heard, that's okay. What I, what I've heard in the past is that people have said they struggle to, struggle to breathe through their mask when they're playing. So that that is the sensical part of this, is when you're playing, you're breathing harder than you are, and when you're sitting on the bench, you're sitting next to six, seven, 10 of your peers, potentially for a sustained period of time, having played basketball, with the exception of the individual from the other team who I always closely guarded with great force. I usually was not in close proximity to my teammates for more than a second or two at a time if we passed each other the presence. So I, I guess there is some rationale behind this. It's, no, you generally don't stand next to your teammates for minutes, five minutes on the floor, but depending on your role on the team, you may sit on the bench next to your teammates for minutes and minutes at a time.
Isn't this mostly what other college and professional sports are doing?
Certainly some. I mean, there's even others who are exploring testing to play options. I mean, so we explored that option as well. But when you go down that path and consider the political landmines and personal belief landmines that we're going to test you and we're going to have to play, and we're going to test you if you're not vaccinated, I'll be honest, those are things that we decided from cost-benefit analysis. We're not going to be worth what we might get from that testing program. But yeah, it's all over the place in terms of what people are doing. And unfortunately, that's, that's just where things are going to be at for a while in light of the order expiring. If it's not re-upped, it's, districts are going to make decisions based on what they think's best for their kids and for whatever their priorities are, if it's to keep kids in school or if it's just to take the mask off, and that's, that's how they're going to make decisions. So it is trying to show that there is some cognition and recognition for some of the things that we've heard, but at the same time, I guess I would say it's not a reckless abandonment of trying to hold on to the integrity of keeping kids in person for instruction. And as we've seen in data over the last year, and to be more specific, our local data, the biggest issue that we've had with in-school transmission are getting into sports. And we want to keep, we want our kids to compete. If we end up with an outbreak on a team, then we might be on a two-week sabbatical because we don't have enough kids that can even field a team anymore. So it's, it's trying to recognize there is a difference when you're on the floor, and I would say particularly playing basketball, a high exertion sport. That is different, and we're trying to recognize that fact, but at the same time, also recognize that I would like those kids to be in school. We would like those kids to be in school and not shut down a team. That, that could happen too.
I personally just want to say thank you for researching that idea of, you know, kind of finding out if there's a way that we could help them because as a parent, struggling to watch your kid and see some of the players last year was kind of heartbreaking because you could tell that they were, the oxygen level just wasn't there and they were having a hard time. And I think that, you know, doing this really kind of shows them that, you know, we are trying to take everything into consideration when it comes to, you know, how they're wanting to play sports and be active and that sort of thing. So I think that, you know, and I think as, you know, those parents too, that, you know, they felt the same way with struggling with their kids watching play sports, and so I think they're going to be very thankful of that as well, that we're looking at this possibility. So and yeah, I mean, I've seen, I think that there's quite a few big pro sports in college, maybe not so much, but still. So I, I thank you for, you know, putting some effort into researching this and talking about this.
Yeah, I think, as I said, I mean, I hope, I'll be the first one. I hope we take a turn for the better and we come back in January at a meeting or even in December. December seems like a pipe dream, but maybe in January, and our local numbers are better, our vaccination rates are, look solid, and our case counts are rolling, our census tracked, and we can make those decisions based on real information and based on the health of our community to continue to, as we kind of coined this phrase, like turning the dial, if we can continue to do that. And I think this is, yes, this is one example of turning the dial and just obviously hoping that it works out okay, but also recognizing the challenges that the kids do have when they're on the floor, they're competing in sports. Matt, go ahead.
If Dane County would come out with something that extends, how does it, if we would have to go with essentially what we did last year with the basketball and stuff, or?
Yeah, well...
Depends, yeah, depends on the county order significantly. It will provide anything else that we've practiced.
Yeah, they did. I mean, yeah, that would put us back in a position saying that we're not going to follow the order in some facet of it, like this quarter example, I guess, just as a district.
We face a lot of legal issues.
Yes, we just need to be tiresome of, once again, I guess, the whole notion of like risk reward for, you know, people like to do, or enforcement of it.
I just didn't know if in the dialogue with Dane County, they were incorporating the thinking about indoor sports, if they would, like, they made that statement about tubas or...
Certainly.
And I just thought maybe this year they would think about, you know, something more like this or...
So when we thought that the order was probably going to get extended, one of the conversations was actually asking for basically this exact language from the county if the order got extended. In recent weeks, I get the sense that unless like the case counts go up tenfold in the next five days, I don't know exactly what happened. I believe it involves lawyers and lawsuits. I get the sense that Dane County, for those reasons, is out of the masking order business, at least temporarily, because when you ask them questions about what has changed and the numbers are now higher than they were in August when you put this in place, but now why suddenly isn't it a good idea? And you could have gone stare. And then you ask, well, assuming it's legal and they kind of put their head down, I'm guessing that's where this is at from the county's perspective. You don't know the details, but then certainly you wouldn't have to be a body language expert to refer that to what's going on.
We've been shocked before.
Jordan, and when you made your dates of notification, you had the 24th. We would be off the following week, so we wouldn't, so I think we need to look at the date because then we'd also need to look at what they are going to be needing to do the week they come back from, from winter break. So we may have to do something New Year's Eve-ish.
Well, no.
The 24th would get you two weeks. That puts you into the seventh, and that gives you that week that they're back.
So that week when it comes, I guess, here's my thinking because I'm not, I mean, so we're here through Thursday, that week we're in school through Thursday, 30. So the notion that I would confer with Katie and then send an update on Christmas Eve is not, not out of the picture. And then, yes, the next week, no. The notice of, the notion that we would benchmark that week where no one's in school for the whole weekend, people are hopefully enjoying family time either here or elsewhere.
So I think, I guess my definition of a rolling two weeks is a little different because it should always be like from that date, two weeks back, not, because then potentially you're looking at three weeks back if you're looking...
So you're saying in consecutive weeks versus weeks that kids are actually in school?
So yeah, so like the 24th should really be looking at the week of the 24th, like those days prior and the days prior to the 17th, not the dates from the 10th and the 17th. Does that make, is that...
Does, and I guess unless I don't understand the data that you had, it wouldn't be.
I, I look at it every day, and I track it every day. So my, I would probably look what you're saying is what, look the best. When I'm looking on the 23rd, I'll look what it's been for the past two weeks.
Yeah.
And I, I mark it every day, so.
Yeah, because I think that would give us a better idea of what's going on in the, in the district versus looking at the 24th, it would be three weeks prior, when you would make a new decision. I need a calendar.
I'm a little confused, admittedly. I mean, so in my mind, what I think I just heard you say in terms of how we want this to look at is exactly how I envision it's going to be looked at.
Okay, yeah.
So on the 23rd, we would be looking at that window of time between the 17th and the 23rd. That is one week. The week before, it would be the 9th through the 16th. That would give you reported on the 17th.
So I guess, and then what I'm thinking is it would really only be for the following week for the mask information. It wouldn't be but for two weeks, it would only be for one week because then your next week, you have that rolling two weeks coming, and it could then maybe change like the following week.
I think I get what you're saying. And if, if you, if we want to put one out the week of New Year's, the week that we're not here, I, I still do the data every day, so it's not that hard for me to say, here's where we're at.
I don't know, I guess that was...
If we have this message, I can throw it at this guy, we're gonna develop, so. I think what she's saying is the 17th, the week we come back.
Well, it could potentially...
Not that something's changed that much if we're looking for a two-week period.
Yeah, I think you're just taking the average of the two weeks prior, and then that extends, then our policy then would extend for two weeks. So if it's a, if it's a low transmission, we go for two weeks. So if it's a, if it's a low transmission, we go for two weeks, then we look at it again. Is this the way I'm understanding it? And then you look back and then that, then we would change, if it goes up then that average, then after two weeks, we would, if it changed from moderate to high, then we would put the mask back on after two weeks of being off. So you're not changing it every week, you're doing it every two weeks you could possibly.
So then we really don't need to send out a, a notification every week if we're doing it that way. So that's where I think I was confused is when we're sending it out every week.
Oh, yeah. Now I get what you're saying.
No, I think you see the idea, because if you did it two, every two weeks, you might miss, like, you could have a week that was, and then you reported that week with the two weeks, only one week of the two weeks prior.
Correct.
And you're recording, so by doing it every week, you're not going to miss, like, a two-week chunk.
Correct.
Because otherwise you could. That's why you would want to report it every week. If that makes any sense.
Look at it, one week's low and the one week's higher, average could.
But you're not averaging the two weeks together, you're looking at one week, two weeks. One week was low, week two was low, you're good for the next week. The next Friday, you're going to look at the prior two.
The numbers that we're looking at are an average, but the way she's saying is right, we're still going to look at it on that date.
Yeah.
To see where we're at, but it's for an average. So you're looking at this week was an average, it was moderate this week, this week it was an average, it was high. Well, we can't, it's not consistent for two weeks. Yeah, so masking isn't going to change unless it's consecutive.
Two consecutive.
Two consecutive weeks. So like a benchmark, I'm just trying to make it clear in my own head. So, I mean, like the benchmark, the information, basically, it would be rolled into what you're, yeah, the one week, it would be the first week of the sample, the second week, it would be the second week of the sample. So that information from the week of, of 12, 10 is basically like in your decision-making, that information is pertinent for two weeks. One week as the new data, the second week as the old data. To me, that's what the rolling two weeks means.
And then it falls off.
And then it falls off. So now, like this date is relevant this week, it's relevant this week, it falls off. This is relevant here, here, it falls off. So the notion of this, to me, data that week of Christmas, I mean, unless you're like dying, are you really going to want to go get tested for COVID during Christmas break? Or if you're traveling in Florida or somewhere else, I mean, I guess to me, I just, I'm trying to be as simple as I can with a very complex situation. The notion of benchmarking data that week when people are all over creation, just did not seem like it would be relevant data. So conceivably, yes, if we were moderate here for the first week of moderate, and then that first week we come back, if we happen to be moderate again, well, then the notification that went out on Friday the 7th may say, we were moderate at a previous benchmark, we're moderate this week as of the 8th. We're going to recommend it or optional. Is that clear-ish?
I, I think I'm just looking at it differently, and that's okay. I think, um, yeah.
We can certainly talk, because I'm, obviously part of the reason we want to talk about this is because if we're unclear.
I guess I'm just fearful that if we are saying that that's for two weeks, that's going to be a three-week old average, like by the time we get to the second week of a mask, we're done.
No, because it drops off or, or it becomes, it was just.
I think I'm just maybe seeing it differently.
Well, but there should never be three weeks.
Two weeks.
Right, there should never be three weeks that, that.
But if we're saying though that the masks would be changed for two weeks, it should only be changed for one week.
Well, no, because you need two consecutive to shift. Because you need two consecutive, so it could change quicker than two weeks.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was wanting to point out.
Yes, that is true.
Okay.
And once again, to me, that goes back to the volatility of, of the data.
Right.
So in this case, if we had gone down to moderate and became less restrictive with masking, but then everyone in the Sims family tested positive for COVID, plus a couple neighbors.
Yeah.
Then we don't want that one week to push us back into going back to masks, just like the getting in and getting out.
Yeah, we don't want it to be so.
You don't want it to be so.
Every, every week change your.
So yes, in that case, I mean, yeah, you're right from that standpoint, and it will take two weeks to get out of it or to get into it, basically, depending how you look at it, but the data will never be older than two weeks old. That's driving the decision, it'll be from the previous week and this week will be the information.
So what you're saying is, conceptually, there could be a very extreme influx to a high situation where masking is currently optional, and that's where it would then be difficult because.
Yeah, and who knows, if someone wanted to get into that situation, hopefully we can just start leveling off and getting down. But yeah, I'll look at a calendar and I'll ask any questions. I need to like visualize.
I think, I'm just, and Kane, correct me if I'm wrong, because you know better than I do, because you, you live this. Over the last year and a half, I mean, yeah, there, there have been some blips on the radar, but by and large, the trends have been trends. We have, we have made the slow incline, we have made the slow decline.
Yeah, I don't think there's that.
And the notion that like we're going to magically go from high to low for two weeks and then jump back up to high. And what I've seen has not been a figure of what this is looking like. But good questions, yes.
Yes, okay, good. I was trying to make sure I was making it, thank you.
Any other questions for right now?
And that's the heights community, right?
Correct, that would be our census tract. So, yeah, just to kind of put the dates out here, obviously tonight, just sharing what our recommendation would be, the date of that first round benchmark, and then with the exception of the 31st of December, basically, I'm planning to share that information, communicate as clearly as possible to our, our staff and our families. And then our December board meeting right now, they're going to be having a calendar. So at that point, yeah, that will be, the 3rd or 10th, that, that will be at the end of a two-week, uh, two-week look, so I think that'll be a good opportunity to kind of talk this through. And after that, I'm sure will be other questions, so we can discuss what those have looked like and kind of how we process. And I'm not saying this is perfect, Matt, I'm certainly not pretending that this was just our, our best attempt to do this in a way that was at least connected to the health of our community, in a way that we can try to keep kids in school, but yet participate in activities and doing other things too.
I think this is good for the community, because I mentioned that we need to put a number on, you know, there's some kind of data that we follow that says, okay, we hit this, we do this, this is what's doing it. I think it gives them that clear distinction, okay, we hit this level, now we have to do this. To me, that's what I've been asking for the whole time, and I think this is what, what I think the community really wanted to see, something like that.
And it, it takes all the other things out of the decision-making, right? It's not some arbitrary second quarter data, it's not just some, it's like based on.
It's harder numbers that are really, that are set there that we can't, I mean, we're not controlling those numbers, it's, I think that's what they wanted to see, was hey, what, what's it going to take for us to take them off? What's it going to take, you know, to do this?
And I think it's going to be, I think, parents, no matter which spectrum you're on, I think, you know, for them actually seeing, you know, that we're taking upon ourselves to, to really look at the data and get it out to them, so that, you know, they don't think that we're just, like you said, just kind of like throwing these numbers out of nowhere and making the decision on that. So I think that, you know, that'll really kind of put it easy. I think a lot of parents, you know, wondering, you know, how we're making the decisions and what data we're using to make the decision, so I think.
My only concern with it being on the district is it is such a small sample size, so it has not been anything to adjust, and that's my concern, it's not a big enough sample size to, to do that, because really, a few cases, and we're already going to be above that 100,000, because we have such a low population.
True, and I, I mean, yeah, we all understand that, I think the others, the other piece of that equation though, is the same thing can be true for the reason why statistics in this case work, is because those small numbers could cripple Wisconsin Heights in terms of actual cases, but those small numbers would not cripple Middleton or, or other districts, because 15 kids in their district is 15 kids. 15 kids in Wisconsin Heights does cripple our operations.
I, I agree with kids, but we're looking at the community too, so it's not just our school district we're looking at, we're looking at everybody out here, and not everybody follows the, you know, guidelines, and there's going to be cases, and I think that's where I, I worry a little bit more about that, is if we're going off just our school, and our school families, 100% I'm working with. That's just my only concern is we, you know, with the community, they, you don't know, I mean, one family gets it, that's not even going to our school, and it's really above our number.
Yeah, no, like I said, I get it, there's, there will always be some limitations to whatever metric intervention is the metric.
I think though what's important to remember though is even if they don't go to our school, they're still a neighbor, and so they could be.
I agree, but that's the problem with being such a small size, number, to go off.
All right, so when I go home tonight, I can tell you, after the 27th, if you are actively playing in a sport, you don't have to wear a mask.
What about practicing?
Oh, yeah, that was another question I had, what about practice?
When they're all practicing on the court.
I can, you want me to address this for?
Sure.
So.
I just hope you weren't asked.
Sure, that's a great question.
So, like I, I'd say at first, or Jane, I don't know who called the question, but, so I have a letter drafted that's off of, kind of based off of what Jordan's letter is going to be, so we're prepared, it'll go out to all activity families. Basically, the, it's the exception to the rule that also in there it says to clarify that you must mask up during warmups and at practices, and then it also addresses what's happening when we are visiting other schools. So we will follow the same, we will try to follow the same policy we have in place at home when visiting another school if allowed, but if they have stricter requirements, we will adhere to those requirements.
Yes, the notion of the exception to be point blank is, is intended for a competing, it's not intended.
Just as I know kids are going to ask, so.
Five players on each team and then the two or three officials on the court when the game starts.
I could tell people a little bit, Dane County, at the 11th hour decides to put something in and they don't make concessions, that would be the only thing that would trump ours. I mean, I totally agree with ours, but if it's somehow Dane.
Do you know something we don't, because you.
I was trying to tell Mike, Prucker is on the board, if they're going to do anything, and she, she's kind of advisory loosely, so she's not in the granular policy stuff. And she said they will always make some sort of decision before it expires, but then she's also, anyway, I don't have any, I, I don't, I was trying to get some off the record.
Good job.
But it is a good thing to keep in mind.
She told me we probably will hear from Janelle in the next couple of days, is what she seemed to think, because she hadn't texted Janelle, but I don't know what that means. Because I, I got the same notion that Jordan got from the, it's sort of mysterious why things haven't really changed, and in fact, we're worse yet, we're going to let this one expire. Seems like the explanations that Jordan gave seem to make sense to me for why, but I don't know. So, yeah, I'm just saying that if they did come down with something, just like if you're telling your friends or neighbors or whoever's asking, just make sure they know that if somehow they could do something, we still have to follow that, so they don't think we're the ones who are giving them that.
I would say, yeah, short of something drastically changing before, a guy that was in our meeting last Friday was being paraded by multiple people, both who perceived lunacy of us eating crack and saying like, oh, I think it might happen. Pretty sheepish, and he's kind of like, yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I, I can't say anything.
I know the two-week rolling hours start basically from the 27th.
Also, we would report, I mean, yeah, on the 3rd, we would go back to the data from previous, we have one week leading up to the 3rd, because we're here tonight, it's just next week. Yep.
Next point. And even if Dane County does something, is there still a good plan and then we get it implemented at some point?
Right. I think that's a great point, that, you know, I think this is a good plan for right now, and who knows what's going to happen. My computer's free, no, sorry.
Sorry.
All right, so, um, we will then look for an approval, if I, do I have a motion to approve the school safety procedures after the expiration of the public health Madison-Dane County, my order on the, in November 27th, if nothing else comes out. Thank you, guys. Any last questions, Spock?
I am planning to send an email to parents and staff members.
All right, with that, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well, thank you all. All right, get on to employee relations. I will take each one separate, just because there is one that has a little bit more to go through. For 6.1, do I have a motion to approve the job descriptions for reading and map interventionist and administrative assistants?
One second.
People, any questions? This is now our approval. All right, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
James?
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Then for, um, information, um, looking to review, uh, the teacher special education and the, um, assistant versions of the documentation, we will look for the approval at our next meeting on December 13th.
Yeah, sorry.
Nope, I was just going to say any questions, but no, go ahead.
I just wanted to explain, I mean, as we've been working on job descriptions, we've got a lot of them, and Evan and I talked about the notion of like a teacher being a teacher, being a teacher, EDA being EDA, being EDA. There is some truth to that, however, special education is a different component, so rather than having one job description that covered all teachers and gave the false sense that the requirements that are in place for a special education teacher are identical to the requirements that are in place for a regular ed teacher, we felt it was necessary to be a little more specific, because the job duties are in many ways different, so I've been wondering why suddenly these came now, that's the process that leads to, there's a lot of differences between a regular ed and a special ed EDA or teacher, we wanted to recognize that in the job description.
Any questions at first length, if anyone has something? All right. Uh, 6.3, um, we will, um, look for a motion to approve the death of, to the employee handbook for the substitute teacher areas, but I think we might do an explanation first. I will, um, Jordan explained it very well, so I'm just going to hand it over to you. I could say something.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, the same staffing shortage that's crippling all industries right now is certainly crippling the education sector, and we have, as we talked about before, we're on pretty thin ice with staffing and operations, so we have, we have two things kind of pointing into this dynamic. One is trying to entice what's now a very shallow external substitute pool, to want to work in the Wisconsin Heights School District on a day-to-day basis. Most subs typically are retired teachers, there's a lot of retired teachers who have said, I don't really go there, I don't want to sub anymore because of my age and the fact that COVID and all the other stressors that come with subbing, so that pool is much more shallow than it once was. And then the other piece is for the compensation, with so many industries raising their compensation for jobs, the notion that people will come to school and be engaged with, if you're at a high school, potentially over 100 children during the day for a rate that equated to less than $20 an hour, for some, it's not that enticing, we can understand it, so. And then the other piece is our staff members having cover for their colleagues and giving up their prep time. The notion of $15 an hour to give up your prep time and then to stay late during workout weekends or do other things to try to make up for what you gave, and at the same time, once again, to find the instruction to our students for $15 an hour. I think this is one where it just, it seems like the right thing to do, and quite frankly, with the market environment right now, it's something that I highly recommend being to do. And we did put the note in here that we would reevaluate this every other year for future consideration. And we did put the note in here that we would reevaluate this every end of the year for future consideration. Crystal ball, this, this may end up just being part of what our handbook reflects moving forward, because I don't think the employment market's gonna drastically shift in the next year or two. But, long story short, this is to recognize our staff for the time that many of them are giving up to cover for colleagues. Is one piece. The second piece is, if we provide a little bit of a financial incentive to try to bring in more people from the outside, that ideally would be what we do, uh, because we don't wanna burn out our staff by having them have to cover for each other on a yearly basis, which is happening in some cases. So, just looking for, or to approve this change, and obviously, there's some financial investment. It's not significant, we budget dollars for subs every year, so it's not as though it's not money that we don't have budgeted, we have money budgeted, it's just there's so few subs available, it's paying a few that we have a little bit more money.
So, Jordan, how much does a teacher get compensated for a second?
So, I mean, I guess, are you saying like when they leave or when they retire?
Yeah, because I can remember when I very first started, a teacher's sick day was worth about twenty hours. And I think we addressed that.
We, we did address that in the handbook.
Significantly, and I know part of why other districts are having so many problems, is because teachers are like, twenty hours, that's all a sick day is worth. I don't care, at this point, I need a break, and they're just bothering me, so. I was just gonna bring up the fact that we addressed that, and it's probably saved us a little bit too, because at least we've shown at some level we've got more teachers more than other districts.
So, yes, to your point, I think there is an incentive that you would not use those days unless you truly need them at this point, because they're actually worth something to you, and you can retire, uh, after five years of service in the district. Whereas previously, you asked, when you were worth twenty dollars to someone that has a college degree? That, that didn't seem like it was a little unobvial.
Yes, my only question is, are we compensating those teachers that are having to step up and cover for other colleagues?
Yeah, yes, right now.
They're getting that as well?
Right now, it's fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
Which, when they.
I didn't know if this was like somebody from the outside, and I didn't know if this was like, like an internal teacher was subbing for somebody else. I thought this was just like an out of district, like if you're having, so like, oh.
Bullet number one speaks to our teachers that are subbing for a colleague right now, and says fifteen dollars an hour, in our handbook, we could put this to thirty. The second one is for people outside the district.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify, like, I kind of thought that, but then I was like, that's one weird thought. Because I was hoping that that was kind of the way it was, because, you know, I would want those teachers to get compensated some way for having to take on, you know, another, another load whom they're already covering, so.
How often do you admin have to fill in?
What's that?
Quite a bit.
Admin, how often are you filling in? I think that's on seven days.
Seven days?
Half days or four days.
So are we doing anything for them on top? Because that is obviously on top of their, I'm just curious.
They get to work with me.
That is the most, that is the only bonus they need.
Sorry.
I'm just curious if someone should address it or not, because.
Because if they're starting to.
I mean, that's a lot of time.
How about Liz and Scott, have you needed to step in or back?
Typically, we, we can be able to do this, we can't, plus, we're coming to study home.
It's a little easier for you.
Yeah.
We can do that because we can. But yeah, we've stepped in, it's kind of animal time.
I was just curious how long, I mean, it goes along a lot of days, and.
And, and Mike, sometimes it's a team effort, you know, like, somebody will say, yeah, you need a couple of these two hours, and somebody will be up a couple of rest of hours. No, all jokes aside, a bad joke. I, I will say, I mean, part of going back to the operational thinking piece, part of the, hidden's the right word, but hidden impact of all of this is, yes, the impact that it's having on just your staff and their wellbeing because of how hard they're working, and it's not that they didn't work hard already, but it's the notion of trying to do, trying to do more with less, basically. And yes, now you have people that already administrators have busy jobs, or giving that up, and so now either your office work is, is five to six P M. work, now two to three P M. work, and for teachers, you gotta give prep time that you're giving up, and now, and you're doing that at night. So I think that's the other piece, with just like our general operations, why we're trying to be so sensitive to our operations. Because now if we throw on top of that, oh, by the way, uh, this grade level's going online for two weeks, or this class is going online, and you need to do both, and I think at that point, that's when we start to lose some people, and like, they're like, this is not what I signed up for.
Hopefully, this will help.
Peace out.
Be more, about to take a class if they're having.
It shows the value of the time, and I think for people's psychological, that's important, to show that you value your time.
Yeah. Huge thank you to our teachers and our admin staff, but it's, it is such an impact that it just triples down to everybody, everybody's feeling it, and we can really recognize that.
Are you finding that there are teachers that are having to kind of take days as breaks to kind of, you know, get themselves back together, so to speak? You know, this, you know, it's one of those.
Tell you, yes, but this is, this is not the, that I was saying. We need to be thankful to them, it's definitely, I guess, taking this seriously. Because I can tell you in some other districts, when they're talking twenty dollars a day, they're like, well, if ten of us walk out on Friday, guess what? They won't be school, because they won't be able to get ten subs. And so, they kind of, they put the school in a bad spot, so, just the fact that we're showing them that.
Yeah, that if they need that day, you know, they're able to be covered, because, is that anybody in any normal job anymore? Everybody needs a mental health day every last while, and I can't even imagine being a teacher, so bless their hearts, that's for sure.
All right, so then I will look for a motion then to approve these addendums as we just discussed. Any, any last questions, James? Mary Beth, Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. Perfect. All right, seven point one, do I have a motion to approve the asbestos maintenance estimate bid of sixty-one thousand, six hundred and five dollars for the Wisconsin Heights High School hallways? And this would be completed, um, during June of twenty twenty-two, this is what was not people to meet this summer.
Is this all the asbestos that's up in the building then?
No, no. I was just curious. I just did the whole.
Nearly.
I was just curious how.
Because it's still a few classrooms, probably.
Yeah, so, as we went through, um, obviously, the hallways are definitely getting done. Then as we went through and looked at the map of the building, and kind of tried to condense this to a certain point in the building.
That makes it easier.
That makes it easier to get it done in bid, so, the majority, yes. Um, we will have a few other rooms that we probably, this will be, uh, probably a handy one over the next three or four years. Tell you to get all of your rooms updated in the high school. Um, so, short answer is no, we're close, but this is what we felt we could bite off.
I'm just curious if that took care of it, or if we did.
There's still a few classrooms.
Was this part of something that was what you did for, was, kind of was supposed to happen over the summer?
Yes.
So this isn't like a, a cost that all of a sudden was like, oh, now.
So this is part of our capital projects budget, the maintenance budget, we, we knew last summer, once they got in and tested the floors and realized that, yeah, between the tiles and the mastic, that there were issues with asbestos, we knew this was gonna have to be taken care of. And they put it in last summer, it was, it's not an easy process.
No, it's not.
I can't imagine.
No, it's, it's intense.
All right, I will take a motion. I'll make a motion. Go. Any last questions? Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth? James?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'll say yes as well. Future meeting dates are listed there. Um, any questions on that? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion.
I'll send it. Angie and James.
Yeah. Mike?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well. Thank you all.